Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Board of Education's special meeting. Today is the 18th of February. It is now seven o'clock. Would you please rise for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Davis, would you read our opening statement?
I sure will. Good evening. As Secretary of the Bloomfield Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorm and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system, and thank you for your interest in Bloomfield Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. It's now time for our consent agenda, approval of the minutes. Mrs. Bolton?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from January 14th, 2020. The regular board meeting is presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any questions, edits? Any unreadiness? Hearing none? Seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? It is so ordered. Student recognition. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, colleagues, parents, and our television viewing audience. The first item on our recognitions will be, we'll acknowledge our January and February Rotary Students of the Month. The January Rotary Student of the Month is Sandre Higgins, a sixth grade student at Carmine Race Intermediate School. According to her teachers, Sandre displays excellence in many areas. She is polite and respectful to her peers as well as the school staff. She's responsible, hardworking, and is a very inquisitive learner and asks questions to expand her learning. The February Rotary Student of the Month is Nicole Amash, an eighth grade student at Carmine Race Middle School. Nicole was chosen by her teachers as the Student of the Month because she has consistently demonstrated outstanding academic performance, strong efforts in the chorus, and kindness to all students and staff. Despite being quite humble, she is a strong CAMHS community leader. Congratulations to our January and February Rotary Students of the Month.
Dr. Thompson, can we have both students come up to the front and stand and face the cameras at least? And then I'd like to have them come down and the Board would like to shake their hands. Is the other one here? Okay. Come right here.
Found in your sister's footsteps, huh? Good girl, good job.
What's your last name? Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, people can't hear that.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, and again, congratulations. Job well done. Parents and community, the Lions Club Peace Poster Contest. You can use that mic right there.
Good evening, everyone. The Bloomfield Lions Club is very happy to award these prizes to two of our students. One, Sandrea Higgins from Carmine Race Intermediate School, and the other, Leila Wong from the Metropolitan Learning Center. The Peace Poster Contest has been going on for at least 30 years, and it was started as a way for, the Lions Clubs have been sponsoring it all over the world, and it was started for, through schools and youth groups, to get the children's input on what they want as peace. And today, and this year's topic was Journey to Peace. And you can see our two winning posters over here, right next to the TV screen. The one on the bottom is Sandrea Higgins' poster, and the one on the top is Leila Wong. And we're very proud of these young ladies for, you know, putting a lot of work into their work. And art is sometimes something that is, for some students, it's a really big outlet. And for them to do a lot of this, some of it was on their free time, and it was just really, really moving to see all their work that they have done. Now, if, I don't know if Leila Wong is here.
I think she just walked in.
Okay. Well, Sandrea, can you come up, please?
It called.
This is for you, and our great appreciation of all your hard work. You did a great job. You're welcome.
Sandrea? Ms. McCann, would you have her come, so everybody can take a picture?
Can you come?
Yeah. Thank you.
You're also on TV at the same time.
Oh, is that who that was? Okay, our other student is not here?
Is Leila here? I guess not. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, but we had another student walk down. Is that?
Yeah.
It's now time for our Student Representative Report, coming from two students at Bloomfield High, Alyana Washington and Blake Wallace.
So, just gonna start with the boys and girls basketball team. They're both going to the state playoffs. The boys' record is, I think, eight and eight, and the girls' record is fifteen and four.
Fifteen and four, I think.
Fifteen and four, yeah.
They've been working really hard this season.
Last night, they tied with Windsor for the CCC North Division Championship.
Oh, nice.
On Friday, the boys and girls track team won states. The class is state championship. Me and Blake are both part of the track team, and it was really something. It was good. It was great. And both teams are also the CCC North Division Champions.
Yes.
Okay, so VHS celebrates Black History Month. There are multiple doors throughout the school that have been decorated by students and teachers about different, different people that have made an impact in black history. So, like Kobe Bryant, or even, there's ones about Harriet Tubman, or just all-around people that have made an impact. And at the end of the month, February 29th, there is going to be an African and Caribbean History Month celebration in the auditorium at VHS at 1:00 p.m.
Every Wednesday, there is SAT prep for all juniors. It's a prep class where the juniors come in, they're broken into small groups where they're paired with a teacher that focuses on problems that they had in the past, so it's more of a selected group where it's focused on what the students need, so it's very beneficial for them.
And it's going to run until the March SAT date. There was a winter, our annual winter concert, we had it in, what was it? January? It was sometime in January. The band played, and there was multiple chorus groups that sang, and it was broken into, the band played, I think we played five songs. It was a lot. And then, it was. And then the chorus groups came out, and they each sung the songs that they had to. It was really nice. Sean Dixon Bodie is currently U.S. number one in triple jump. He won Millrose Games, yes. He won the Millrose Games with the number three jump of all time, so he's one of the best of all times. And we have another track athlete, a junior, Corey Steele, and he's currently U.S. number five in triple jump as well, so he really excels in the jumps. VHS Unified Sports, we hosted our first home game of the season versus Simsbury last, last week?
It was last week.
It was last week. Both of us are in Unified Sports as well. We practice with the Unified Kids every Wednesday after school, and we usually have games at, like, South Windsor. We had one.
There was one in New Britain.
There was one in New Britain. So, right now, we're in basketball, but we had soccer a couple months ago, we had bowling, and the kids really like it, we enjoy it, it's a whole lot of fun. It's great just to see them able to have fun and participate in sports. There are a lot of acceptances going in, coming in right now. We have Penn State, University of Richmond, Old Dominion, NSU, University of South Florida, and UConn. I actually am the one who got into NSU, second choice, so I'm really excited for that. So, yeah. Hoping to hear from more schools soon. Yes. It's kind of like the dead period in between, like, early action and regular decisions, so hopefully soon we'll decide where we're going. There's currently a lecture series at VHS where the students get to explore different career paths. We're gonna have speakers that come every month, and they're gonna talk about the students, about different career paths, and post-secondary plans to upperclassmen, but more specifically students that, you know, have a gear towards certain careers. Last week, we talked, we got to experience a talk about law, which I have an interest in, political science slash law, so it was good for, to just to learn, like, the different experiences that, you know, everybody, that this man got to go through, and the different paths that you can take in just one career. Okay, coming up.
The Boys Basketball Senior Night, which is February 21st at 6:35 p.m. in the VHS Gymnasium.
The indoor track stay open is a Saturday, February 22nd at 10:00 a.m. at the Hill House. The SGC meeting. Wait, is it good? Don't move anything. Okay. Ooh. All right, the SGC meeting is, oh, that's you. Yeah, that was me. Sorry. SGC meeting is February 25th at 6:00 p.m. in the VHS Library Media Center. Like I said before, the African and Caribbean History Month celebration is February 29th at 1:00 p.m. in the VHS auditorium. Boys' Inspiration Performance with Virginia State University's Gospel Choir is March 6th at 7:00 p.m. at the First Cathedral Church. And there's a Harlem Field Trip on April 6th, and the activities include a guided tour of Harlem, lunch at Sylvia's, a tour of the Arturo Schaumburg.
Schaumburg.
Schaumburg, I said that right. Center for Research in Black Culture, and a tour of the Apollo Theater.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Fryman?
We have a lot of young people that give presentations. Yours was fun. I could have sat here and listened to you for the next hour.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
And it also expressed, I think, to most of us that you're having a great time at Bloomfield High School.
Yes, we are.
So, we thank you, we thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Any other comments? Mrs. Bolton?
Yes, is the Harlem trip open?
I wish. It's just for the upperclassmen. Yeah, it's eleven twelve.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bolton, why don't you talk to the principal back there? See if he needs some more chaperones. I just want to add a little bit to your athletic presentation. The boys' basketball team did qualify for the state tournament, and it's the first time since 2018, so congratulations goes out to them. Big congratulations to both the girls and the boys' track team, but the boys' track team won their title for, I believe, the fifth year in a row, and the girls won it for the 11th year in a row. Almost before you got to school.
Yes, long time running.
Yeah, so, again, thank you for your presentation.
Of course.
So, if you want to, go ahead.
Sorry, I hate to ask, but what school was SDU?
NSU.
NSU.
Nova Southeastern University. It's 30 minutes away from Miami, so it's Port Lauderdale.
Okay. No, I just didn't know.
Okay, and you probably have to, got homework that you haven't done all weekend? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, time for public comment? One listed on the public comment, Mr. Ken McClary, former council member. Please give us your, your name, your address, and once you do that, you have two minutes.
Yep, thank you. Kenneth McClary, 2 Wedgewood Drive, Bloomfield, Connecticut. To the Chairman, Mr. Harrison, and members of the Board of Education, and Dr. Thompson, I first would like to say thank you for your response to my inquiry to the Board of Education regarding the librarian media specialist at the intermediate school and the middle school. Today, I'm here to talk about the budget. Dr. Thompson is presenting his proposed budget to the Board of Education, and I would like to request that maybe you take a recess, because there's a number of parents here. I mean, we would like to follow along with the budget, so maybe if we can get a budget summary, so we can follow along, and maybe have questions after or during the session, that would be helpful, as there are a number of parents in the audience who may have some concerns. Secondly, I want to talk about the data, the Next Generation Accountability System. If you go onto the State Department of Education's website, you can pull up the 11 to 12 metrics under the Performance tab, as far as growth for English and mathematics, and you start to see the numbers trending downwards. In some instance, if you look at the trend, the trend states that we are worse off than we were four years ago, and I just want to maybe get another response on, are we focusing on tier-one instruction, the quality of the teacher? What are we doing to ensure that these test scores go back up? Because, you know, our students are the next generation of leaders, and we want to ensure that they're able to compete in a competitive world. Secondly, while looking at that, the data, I saw something that was very concerning, the amount of suspensions at the high school. So, when you click on it, you see there's a number of suspensions at the high school. What is causing that, that trend? That's concerning to me. And so, if, if we could get, if I can receive a response to that, that would be greatly appreciated, but I really, really would like to see the summary of your budget proposal tonight, and I'm sure the parents that are here tonight would like to also follow along. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let me just say this. The Board of Education is seeing the budget for the first time tonight. Our job is to take it, go home, study it. We're gonna be in a lot of discussion about it next week. The Board will be, the budget will be available to the public online tomorrow morning, so you'll be able to tap into our website and get a full copy of the budget at that time. Anything I left off?
Nothing you couldn't have left off.
Yeah.
Mr. Jackson, is there any schedule? There's a public comment, February 27th, is that in the schedule?
Yes, we're getting it posted online.
Yeah, 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 okay.
No, I just want to note to the public, and when you get the budget book, on the second page, it has a schedule of Bloomfield Public Schools 2021 Budget Timeline, and on Thursday, February 27th, 2020, public comment and board deliberation of district budget, which will be held generally seven o'clock here, where all the public can comment on the budget. So, we give people a penny of time to get the document, digest it, and then come with your questions. Thank you.
Superintendent's report. Dr. Thompson?
There's someone.
Huh?
I didn't sign in.
Okay, you know, we've got to, it's always up there, so I'm gonna recognize you this time, okay? So, please come forward. Give us your name, your address.
I apologize, I came from a town exam. Mary Ann Stone, 12 Valley View Drive, Bloomfield. This is just very last minute, and it just, I just have concerns about the protocol for when there's bullying in the middle school, or just schools in general. My son, in seventh grade, was slapped by a little girl one week, and then that following Monday, he got pushed. And not one person contacted me. Fortunately, my children speak to me and tell me things, and they really don't like it that mommy wants to then go to the school and speak to people. But because I'm very, we communicate, and the kids know that I communicate with the teachers, I graduated with Trevor, Dr. Ellis, from Bloomfield, so we have a great communication. And all the teachers, we communicate. The kids know that I am gonna go back to the school if need be. I'm just a little concerned that they didn't feel it necessary to come to me and tell me these things that my children had to tell me, and then I had to go to the school and question them about the fact that my son was slapped and then pushed a few days later. Then I'm told that A, B, and C is gonna happen to this child, none of which did happen. And I just don't feel that any of this is being taken seriously, and I don't think to come to the Superintendent or to this office here at the Board of Ed, because I'm, I have faith in the school to do what they need to do, when I'm thinking that maybe I shouldn't have the faith in them that I have. So, I don't know, what should I do? Where do I go? I mean, do I just say, screw you guys, and just come to you guys? Because this is serious business here. This is assault. I could truly have this girl arrested. Maybe not arrested, I, it's, actually, it is assault. It's assault. She could go to juvenile.
Thank you. Well, would you, you have her name?
Yes, I have her.
And your address?
I'll follow up with you after the meeting today.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. In observance of Black History Month, our schools will be hosting a variety of activities focused on the culture and contributions of African Americans throughout U.S. history. These events will occur during the month of February and include assemblies, classroom lessons, research projects, and artistic performances. In your board packets, you will find a table outlining the Black History Month events by school, and we welcome you to join us at these school events. There's a pretty comprehensive list. We had also, this morning, kicking off our professional development for our staff today, we were fortunate to have Dr. Ben Oster be the keynote speaker, who really did a phenomenal job in presenting the contributions that African Americans have made to this country.
Thank you. Under old business, the policy for a second, reading, conduct, and discipline.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. In your packets, you have a revised policy on conduct and discipline, and this, this policy was reviewed by the Policy Committee on October 29th, came to the Board of Education for a first reading on November 12th, and came back to the Policy Committee on January 28th, 2020, for a second review, and it is here tonight for your consideration. The policy before you is a result of Public Act 19-91, and that concerning various revisions and additions to educational statutes. In particular, Section 9 of that statute changed the wording, and you'll see the wording on Page C of the policy that you have in front of you. The policy used to, and the law used to read, that a child who is going to be recommended for expulsion, that this child's conduct on school grounds, or at a school-sponsored activity, or at a school-sponsored, that violated a publicized board policy, or is seriously disruptive to the educational process and endangers persons or property. The law, Public Act 19-91, changed that to read that the student's conduct must be both violating of the board policy and either seriously disruptive to the educational process or endangering persons or property. So, that is the sole revision to this policy, and we recommend adoption.
Mrs. Bolton?
I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the adoption of Policy 5131, Conduct and Discipline.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Let me add that we have vetted this through committees twice, and it's been dealt with at, at a past board meeting, so this is the time that we present for policies to be adopted. That's why we referenced it as being a second reading. That's why we referenced it as being a second reading. Any comments?
I just want to echo the Chairman's comments. We, twice in committee and twice here at the board, this means second time, we vetted this policy.
Hearing now, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is abstentions? It is so ordered. Revision to the 2020-21 academic calendar. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you. In your packets, you'll see a revised academic calendar for the next school year. It contains 180 school days, which is required. The only change to this calendar from the previous calendar that was adopted or passed, reviewed by the board is the fact that the, there was in the previous calendar on June 9, a professional development day scheduled. And we found out after the fact that that was contrary to the teacher's contract. So what we've done, in lieu of having that professional development day on June 9, you'll see that for the month of October, October 21, to be exact, you'll see a half a day for professional development. And then for the month of March, you'll see that Wednesday, March 10, is also another half a day of professional development. These were not on the calendar that was approved previously. So we're asking tonight for the board to consider adopting this revision to the calendar. And again, this calendar, as was the other calendar, is in accordance with the CREG Regional Calendar in terms of start date, in terms of a major vacation period, and so forth.
Mrs. Bolton?
I move, excuse me. I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the revised 2020-21 calendar, academic calendar as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so ordered. Thank you. Presentation of the proposed 2020-21 budget.
Good evening again. William Guzman, Chief Officer. I will guide you through the presentation of the 2020-21 proposed budget. It's important to know that this spending plan is a correction year for the school district. This budget addresses high issues identified in our classrooms.
Can you hear me?
Krista, yes, because he's only going to use these.
Pull it to you. Okay.
Okay. Could you hear now?
Got to pull it to you.
Okay. Sure, okay. We believe key leaders of our town council fully understand why additional resources need to be committed to our school system. The Bloomfield Public School system is a key town asset. The commitment of the Bloomfield Public Schools to achieving excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts is a major contributor to an increase in the town population, grand this, in generational high increase in commercial and residential real estate development. We must continue to raise the bar on expectations and keep the focus on improving student performance and preparing students for college and meaningful careers. This coming year budget proposal of $47.67 million represents an overall increase of $4.25 million or a 9.7% increase over the current year budget. The 2020-21 key drivers are the rising cost in tuition for special needs and magnet school students, health insurance, staff salaries, and transportation. Go through the second slide, Krista. Of the overview. The three Ps are outlined here in the overview. Our purpose, the process, the payoff. To ensure that we achieve the payoff, we must schedule workshops in the coming weeks to provide our board members with opportunities to fully vet and discuss the spending plan. Two guiding principles for developing the 2021 district budget. Our commitment to these principles have guided this year's challenging budget process by ensuring alignment with the district's vision, theory of action, and our district plan of excellence by supporting the sustainability and expansion of effective programs for students. This budget provides resources to support student achievement with the following objectives. Additional staffing to address compliance in highly carriers. No services or programs will be eliminated. Reasonable class sizes will be maintained and a concerted effort will be made towards acquiring additional grants and resources. Our four priorities. Holistic accountability, rigorous curriculum, instruction, and assessment, positive school climate, family and community engagement. We have worked collaboratively to ensure this budget proposal supports our district priorities and vision which strives for high expectations of academic achievement while promoting positive school climate and a culture of meaningful family and community engagement. At this time, I will turn our presentation over to our Chief Operation Officer, Mr. William Guzman, who will review the 2021 budget proposal figures.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Page seven of your, in your handout is a graph that you've become familiar with over the years. And it goes back to the first year that Dr. Thompson became Superintendent of Schools, 2011 and '12. And you can see that the first four years of his administration, there was 0% increases being proposed for the school district budget. And it was only until 2015, 2016 that there was the first suggested increase, which amounted to 1.85% at that time. And just for your information, that was the first year that the school district budget had to account for the other post-employment benefit, OPEP. And prior to that, there was no accounting for that obligation. And in that first year, the sum of $266,000 was allocated for that obligation. And since then, we've been carrying that obligation in the budget book. But you can see over the time, including those first four years of 0% increases, that over that 10-year period, the budget increase has gone up approximately 2.19% increase, which is a pretty level, if you will, increase. The next page shows the 14 major accounts that we report at every board meeting and what those numbers look like in terms of next year's budget. As Dr. Thompson mentioned, next year's budget totals $44 million, $47,674,701, which is a 9.78% increase. And you can see the percentage increases into various 14 major accounts. Certified salaries, non-certified salaries, benefits, which account for a major part of the budget. In these accounts for certified salaries and non-certified salaries, and we'll get to this in a later slide, the salary increases include approximately $1.3, $1.3, $1.4 million worth of salaries for new positions that we've added to the budget. And we'll explain those positions in a later slide. The following slide, which is the major cost drivers. What creates the 9.78% budget increase? You can see the salaries. $1.9 million worth of salaries accounts for 4.5% of that increase. And again, as last year, employee benefits is a major driver in terms of the budget request. Health insurance, medical health insurance for employees. According to our consultant, the recommended increase for next year, based on claims that have been filed, is 6.4%. 6.4%, we're hoping that over the next several months, because that is all claim-based, will come down. But at this particular point, the consultants from Lockton have recommended a 6.4% increase. OPEP, other post-employment benefits that I mentioned earlier that started in 2015-16, is still with us. And for this year, the increase in that obligation amounts to $223,000. You should know that that obligation as a whole in the school district budget amounts to $1.4 million. So in this budget request, $1.4 million goes to the obligation that OPEP represents. It's grown over time and will continue to grow. Pensions have increased by $122,000. Severance pay. Severance pay is a contractual obligation that's in the contracts. And for this year, that amounts to $99,000. And we have other benefits that are going up. And Social Security is one of them in particular, $86,000. So you can see that employee benefits amounts to 2.5% of this increase. Tuition, another major account that you're all familiar with, outside placement tuition, magnet school tuition. We anticipate going up to the tune of $597,000. Well, 1.38% of the increase. Transportation contracts. We have two major transportation contracts, one with Daco and one with Access. Those contracts, Daco's contract is going up 5.5% this coming year. And Access is going up 2.5%. You may recall that we asked both these companies for this current fiscal year to provide some relief to the budget. And Daco came forward and provided the district with a $150,000 credit to be taken out on a monthly basis throughout the school year. And Access Transportation took a 0% increase for this current fiscal year. Operations, which is really utilities and maintenance expenses, is going up approximately $128,000. And the balance, contracted services, communication supplies, approximately 0.18% of the budget increase. So these are the budget drivers that we have. Again, we, in terms of benefits, it's status quo. We're just dealing with contractual obligations. But under salaries, as I mentioned before, we have contractual obligations in terms of the teacher's contract, which I believe is a 1.7% increase. The administrator's contract, which is a 2% increase. And then the fact that this line item alone includes 30 new positions. And those 32 positions, those 30 positions are on Page 10. Now, at the last Finance Committee meeting, we talked a little bit about a proposal that we put before the Town Council. For the 2021 budget, those 30 positions, and this looks, should look familiar to most of the members of the Finance Committee, are in fact those positions that we put before the Town Council. And you can see that we have a total, if you look at the bottom line, a total of 13 certified positions that we're requesting in this budget. Teachers, both special education teachers as well as regular education teachers for the classrooms, a variety of classrooms at the high school, the middle school, case, Laurel, and so forth. As well as 17 non-certified positions from instructional assistants to clerical assistants to support personnel. The media clerk at the, at A-Race is in this, on this list, as you'll see. So again, the cost of this, in terms of salaries, is approximately $1.35 million. And that's represented in the overall, in the overall budget. The budget book that you have, and will be online, as a matter of fact, by 10 o'clock tonight. Will be online approximately 10 o'clock tonight. Includes a message from the Superintendent of Schools, the budget timeline that Mr. Reich mentioned before, with a special meeting of the Board of Education on Thursday, February 27, to hear comments from the public and to hopefully adopt a proposed budget at that time. I just want to highlight the revenue page, which is on Page 7. That revenue page, when it deals with state grants, is really subject to the General Assembly when they, when they meet and convene and hopefully legislate more funds into a variety of educational grants, including the ECS Grant, the Education Cost Sharing Grant, Special Ed Grant, Excess Cost Grant, a variety of other grants. The state has been woefully behind in its promise from many years ago to fund education at the 50-50 level. 50% from the state and 50% from the local entities across the state. Well, the closest the state ever came to that 50% promise was, I believe, 37%, probably a decade ago. But these revenue figures- But these revenue figures will change depending on the General Assembly's actions. I can tell you that the governor and his budget proposed an increase to the Education Cost Sharing Grant across the state, but in particular for Bloomfield. Whether that becomes a fruition depends on the General Assembly's actions over the next I do want to mention, in this book, you'll see a section on executive summary. The executive summary, which is on page 70, talks about the 14 major accounts that we mentioned before, the various increases to the various accounts. But following that page, you'll see some explanation as to why the increase. Page 71 delineates the 13 certified new positions that we're asking. Page 73 includes the 17 non-certified positions that we're proposing in this budget. So all the 14 accounts have some descriptor, if you will, of what makes up the various increases, or in some cases decreases, to a particular line item. The other thing I do want to mention is a section called Line Item Budget, which starts on page 92. These pages in this section are the entire budget by line item. And it's broken up by the 14 major accounts, but these are the sub-accounts to each of those 14 major accounts. So this is the entire budget that we're presenting and recommended for your review, consideration, and hopefully adoption at the next Thursday, the 27th. The book hasn't changed over the years. The numbers have changed, but the book hasn't changed in terms of the layout. I can tell you that, as an aside, Blum Shapiro, who does the audit for the school district as well as the town of Bloomfield and many, many other school districts and towns, one of the comments from one of the auditors was that, wow, this book is really transparent. And I leave that with you as a thought, that you have the entire budget in that line item section at the back of the book with the executive summary explaining some of the nuances of each of the accounts. So that ends my presentation, Ms. Aris.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman, Dr. Thompson. Just want to remind the board that, to date, everybody has signed up except for one board member at this point to have one-on-one, sit down with the superintendent and the chief operating officer, and me, and to hopefully answer any questions, any concerns you have with this budget. As I said, we are getting it for the first time tonight. I'm asking each board member to take it home, study it. If you've got anything, any burning questions before you coming in for your meeting, send me an email or a text. I will get that same to the superintendent in a timely manner, so he'll have a chance to research it and to have an answer for you when you come into the meeting. Okay? A 10B, Policy for Initial Reading, Adult Education.
Thank you very much, Mr. Board Chair. Good evening to our board members, Dr. Thompson, and our community members tonight. The reading is for Policy Number 6200, Adult Continuing Education Instruction. On January 28 of 2020, the Bloomfield Public Schools Board of Education Policy Committee received the draft of this policy for adult continuing education instruction. This is a new policy, and it is required for districts providing their own adult education This policy aligns with Public Act 13121, Concerning Adult Education and Transition to College. It allows adult education programs to offer a range of classes. By law, a local or regional board of education must have its own program of classes, adult classes, and we do offer our own adult education program, as I mentioned. In our policy, we are required to offer a variety of subjects and areas of civic, cultural, vocational, addressing the civic, cultural, and vocational needs of the community. And no tuition shall be charged for residents who enroll in adult classes for elementary and high school completion, as well as Americanization or citizenship and United States citizenship, and English for adults with limited English proficiency. Additionally, other courses may be offered in alignment with the interests in the community. That is our policy.
Thank you. Any questions? Again, this is going back to committee, and then it will be brought back to us at our March meeting for a second reading. Cabe Updates. The only update I have, really, from combination of Cabe, Crick, and the Hartford Area Superintendents, there'll be legislative agenda meeting at the Capitol this Thursday at 8:00 a.m. Every organization out there, Cabe, Crick, HASA, everybody's got their own legislative agenda that they want to propose to the legislation. So these three groups are coming together. The audience, the primary audience, will be our local legislators, not only our local, but legislators across the state. And it will give these three organizations a chance to present what is coming down the pike to legislation for possible voting as far as laws are concerned. There is still a big push in the state, as I've mentioned before, on special ed costs, which are just completely out of control. Special ed costs are crazy, crazy, crazy. I came out from DC about three weeks ago representing Cabe and the National School Board Association. We went up on Capitol Hill and talked to all of our legislators. And those of you not in the know, it's, you know, there's 25% of the costs for special ed have been promised by the federal government. Well, the fact of the matter is, what really comes to the state of Connecticut is 7% of that 25. And what we end up getting, maybe 5% of that 25. So thus, we have no control over special ed costs. We can go along through the school year and think we're doing great, and a special ed outside placement student may walk in the door the 1st of May and requiring a outside placement, which can run between 80 and $150,000. And we are obligated to take that student in. So having said those few words, so any member of the board, well, you should already know this, but day on the hill, February 20, at 8:00 a.m. at the Capitol. Yeah. Okay, yeah, just a reminder. Also, the Cabe, which is Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, day on the hill, will be at the Bushnell on March 11. We have a meeting before then, though, don't we? That's why I didn't mention it. Yeah. But that's at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning. Board comments. Mr. Icke?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Friday, January 24, there was a regional legislative breakfast held here in Bloomfield, and all the board members were in attendance, along with the chairman and superintendent, I think it was Windsor, Windsor Locks, East Granby, Enfield. It was very, very informative, and one of the biggest issues they talked about was special education costs throughout all those districts. And legislators were there, Senator McCory, McGee, it was-
Bobby Gibson.
Bobby Gibson. It was Windsor, Garback, it was one from Windsor Locks, so it was very informative, and Bloomfield was well-represented discussing that issue. And happy Black History Month. And if you have an opportunity, attend the Black History Program, Back My Fraternity. We're having our Rotary contest on Friday, on Saturday, February 29, at 9:00 a.m. at Capitol Community College. All welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
How do I follow that? First of all, it's nice to see former town council members and current town council members in the back of the audience there. Thank you for joining us. I also want to thank the Lions Club and the Rotary. It's your members that make us work together collectively and helps us with what we're trying to achieve. And as we bring young people together, we all work together to do for the same purpose. So thank you for participating. Yes, we have a lot of work to do regarding the upcoming budget. We can't do it alone. We need your input. You know, we have our board of unions here, we have our residents here, you know, but we need to have your input vocally as well. Come here and tell us, talk to us about some of your concerns. I know many of us get anonymous letters to our homes regarding one issue or not. If that's the case, come and tell us personally regarding, you know, what's bothering, so we can have a better understanding. You have questions, please, you know, that's what we're here for. Go to our superintendent of schools, go to our chairperson, come to our meetings, and if you have questions about our budget, come here. Come here first, before you look for other answers. Lastly, I want to congratulate Dr. Thompson on the Lemuel Haynes Lifetime Award. Congratulations.
He has got it.
No one's better than our superintendent of schools to receive something. And it's also showcasing that there is something good happening in our town for recognizing our superintendent. Thank you. End of my comments.
Ms. Easman?
Thank you for everyone coming out today. It is budget season. I can't wait to go home and study the budget, get my questions together. This is really going to be great for me as a first-time board of ed member. I get a different perspective. I am a parent, so I've seen the other side of this. I know what I want this budget to look like. I know where I want this money to go. And I just encourage everyone to look at the budget as well. And that's all I'll say about the budget. Congratulations to the Rotary Students of the Month, all of our student athletes. I love hearing about how successful they are. I do believe that being a student athlete really helps you to become a well-rounded individual, citizen, adult, all of that, so I think it's great. That's all I have, and congratulations, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Moore?
I just want to say, as far as the budget is concerned, I'm going to be reviewing it too. It's a lot to review, but I suggest that everybody review it because this is what we're here for. Other thing I just really want to say is, I really appreciate the teachers, the festivals, everything that's been going on this month for Black History Month. I mean, we have so much stuff going on in all the schools, and I'm really proud to see everything that's taking place. I mean, you can see all the effort that's been put into it. Now, I do have one question from Mr. McCann. When you asked the people that stared up today, the new teachers, I think it was? Now, I don't know, I don't know if there was, were these new teachers coming from other schools or just new teachers coming into Bloomfield?
Coming into Bloomfield.
Okay. Yes, the right question. Okay, thank you. I was looking, I'm like, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. So I have quite a few. My comments won't be long. Do I have three minutes, like, the people that give comments?
You have whatever time you need, Ms. Davis.
I won't take too long, because I respect everybody that came out tonight, and I know, you know, it's after 8 o'clock. I won't be long, but I do find it very important that I do get some points as I take this opportunity to share some of my concerns with the viewing audience and the people that are here tonight. Mr. Friedman did mention about an anonymous letter that we received, some of us members around the board. I won't go into much detail about it, but to his point and to the viewing audience and the people that are here, I think you really need to understand how important it is that you don't send anonymous letters. I understand that it could feel like, you know, you put yourself in a compromising position if you do come before the board and express your concerns and for fear of retaliation or fear of not being able to address your comment or concern as eloquently as you could probably do it in writing. But it's very important that you come so that we understand. This is my second term on the board. This time is a four-year term. Prayerfully, I'll make it that four years. But for the last two years, I took an approach where I was going to just try and sit back and listen and learn. And I did that to the best of my ability. But now I feel like, which I said at the end of my term last year, was that I was going to take a more active role, and my concentration was going to be on the kindergarten classroom and to try and figure out how we could best do our business to catch them early, to start at the kindergarten classroom and make a deliberate effort for us across the board to understand the importance of that. I have left my job with a headache, and I went to Laurel School to watch the students be acknowledged for Student of the Month. They still have the collaboration with Mega Education. Mr. Vega was there, and they presented the children with awards and medals. That was very outstanding. I also went to Laurel PTO meeting to hear, you know, address some of the concerns, and I've had several conversations with the principal about the needs and how we can best concentrate on the effort to make sure that we are doing what we need to do to get these kids a head start. Because we can't have them starting so far behind and expect us to get to a place where our children are succeeding, expect them to get to the next level. I've had several parents that called me in tears because they feel like their children are not getting to where they need to be from kindergarten. One particular parent felt like her child is reading, but he has children in the classroom with him that are behind and that are special needs, and they're all in one classroom. How do we expect our children to get to the next place if they don't have educational assistance? And when we're talking about budgets, I saw that there was a line item for another Laurel teacher, a teacher at Laurel. We have to make a more concentrated effort to make sure that those teachers are getting assistance. And again, I've been in this district for a very long time. My children graduated both from, went through this district. When Dr. Thompson first came on board, my son was leaving, and our school system was in dire strait. At that time, Dr. Thompson had moved the school system in a different direction. And to Mr. McCleary's point, it looks like it's going backwards now. And I can't identify what's really happening. I don't know what is the difference. But I do know that I have had several parents contact me about Laurel Elementary School. And I know that I said before I left here last year, please, please, board members, superintendent, fiscal agents, HR, let's do something to make sure that our kids get a fighting chance. Doesn't seem like they're getting that. And I don't know what it is that we need to do, but we really do need to do something. And I'm not going to stop talking about it. I'm not going to stop expressing my point. And I know- And I know it's not a quick, easy fix, but I do know something. We better do some concentration on that as a board member. I didn't come here to just to sit on the board, because I could really be home eating ice cream, because that's what I really want to be doing right now. I promise you, I could be doing a lot of other things. I had a long day, just like most of us here, and we really got to do something about it. And to the anonymous letter, the elephant in the room, they're talking about central office staff having a lot of the money in the budget. We see that staff, certified staff, a lot of that money does go there. We have to figure out a way that that is going, because I really don't care if central office staff made a million dollars apiece, personally, as long as our children are getting a quality education and our curriculum is being concentrated for the South in the comparison to the rest of the towns. I was told a couple of years ago by Mr. Harris, stay in my lane when it comes to that. This is my lane. This is my lane, because I really need to understand it, understand it. If we're comparable for Simsberry, we're comparable for A-Bon with the salaries of the people that are making, let our children's education be comparable. Those kids are getting to the next level. They're getting where they need to be. And these are my children. These are my children, and I take it very personal that these are my children, and they deserve a fighting chance. They deserve me to speak up. They don't deserve anonymous letters. They deserve us to come before that podium. They deserve us to make sure that we are doing our jobs to make sure that these children get a fighting chance, and they're not. They're not getting what they deserve. When I have parents that are calling me in tears, one parent's telling me she changed her work schedule to go sit in the classroom because she does not feel comfortable with her child being left in a kindergarten classroom. I got a parent that said that she is really concerned about that. We have a teacher that was brought on that they don't feel understands curriculum. And these people are calling me because of, you know why? Because of what I'm doing right now, because I'm going to speak up for them and I'm going to do my best, you know? And nobody, I don't really care if you don't listen to me, that's not going to stop me from talking. I'm going to keep saying what it is that I need to say. And I'm putting my foot to, and I'm putting, you know, when I talk, I'm, I'm, I'm doing it too, because I'd just like to share, it was brought to my attention by, that a few of the elementary schools in Bloomfield were in use of computers. So I reached out to one of my colleagues at the U.S. Senator Murphy's office. She informed me that the U.S. Senate has computers for the school programs, which was established to offer surplus from the senator's computers. With my efforts, five, five computers were given to Metacomet, five computers were given to Carmen A. Race, and five were given to Carmen A. Race Middle School. So when I'm going out there talking about my district, I'm not talking about all the bad, because there are some great teachers, great teachers who deserve also the opportunity to do their jobs, because teaching is a passion. And when you pick it on and you really are serious about it, you're there to do a job. So I am just trying to do everything that I can on my end, but I know I can't do it by myself, and I know I sit here with a purpose. And my purpose is to speak up and advocate for our district. In addition to that, we, I also serve as Equity Chair for the Alliance for Bloomfield Children through a grant process. We, I was able to make sure that all of the kindergarten, first and second grade got two books that we purchased with grants to give to those kids, so that make sure, it was called the Literacy Cafe. We did that through the PTO meeting to make sure that the kids get books. So I'm doing my part as best as I can. And also with Mr. Guzzo's help in the third graders, we did it. We had a phenomenal, a phenomenal meeting with them, and we also gave, through a local author, books that he wrote for his family, and we gave them two books. So literacy is important. We understand that reading is fundamental. And me, as a person, I'm going out in everywhere that I know, everybody that I can touch, anybody that I can get involved to let them know that this is important. Our children are important, and they deserve a fighting chance, and we have to, we must do it. And this is the time that I'm speaking on public comment. I'm going to be back again, making these same comments again, I'm sure. I'm going to keep on talking about it until I see results or until my term is up, until my term is up. And again, I don't know how long that term is going to be, but as long as I'm here, I'm going to hold everyone accountable who is supposed to be accountable, and that's directly the superintendent, because that's who we report to. That's who we're supposed to service, and that's who is the leader of all of it. And I think Dr. Thompson has done his due diligence. I don't know, again, where the, where it's falling off, but we need to get back on track, and we need to make sure that, you know, like they talked about, the special education is, cost is out of control. Maybe if we catch some of these kids, babies, we can fix it before they get out of control. Maybe we can help with some of the issues and collaborate with doctors or resources or whatever. There's things that we can do that we can make it better. I think that's all I got to say right now, because I'm starting to get a little emotional about it, and it's not really emotional that it's sad, it's not really emotional that I'm angry, I don't want to be an adversary, I want to be an advocate, and I want to help make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Bolton.
You should just do the benediction.
Mrs. Bolton.
I would like to, first, I would like to congratulate once again Sanchere Higgins and her family for, Sanchere for the award she received. Chandra?
Chandra.
Sanchere.
Close. All right. Ms. Higgins. Yeah, for your honors tonight, and for having the patience and diligence of just sitting through this meeting. Nice job. Also, I would like to mention that I had the opportunity, along with Mr. Moore, to attend the Black History, the professional development that is provided for teachers and administrators today. And I was just very, very impressed with, well, actually, I was only there for Dr. Foster's presentation. But I, I don't know any other district that has offered Black History settings for teachers and administrators during Black History Month. But I appreciated Dr. Foster mentioning, talking about eliminating the deficit model analysis based on Afro-American history. He did an awesome job. He gave us all a test, and I don't know about anybody else who was there, but I didn't do real well at all.
I did.
No, you didn't. You cheated. Anyway, I'm grateful, and thank you so much for that opportunity. And then finally, the budget process. This is something that I think is one of the most important things that we do as board members, and I believe, I know that I take it very, very seriously. So I have canceled my weekend plans, and this will be my reading, and I'll be prepared for my workshop on Monday. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bolton. I also have no real plans this weekend, although, although I will be in church on Sunday. But I'm going to spend my time poring through this document and learning as much as I can about it and developing any questions I may have going forward. This is only part of it. This is only part of it, because whatever we come up with still has to be presented to the council. And as you remember, last year, it was, it was a tough, tough battle, and we ended up getting tremendous cuts, which have impacted exactly what's going on, some of the issues raised by Mrs. Davis. You know, money can only go but so far, and money can only be stretched so far. So, parents, I need you, need you to be there when we make our presentation to the council, and make your phone calls, because we need, we need help. Again, this Black History calendar that you sent out, is that somewhere online?
It should be on the school's website.
Yeah.
But if not, I can post it online.
Okay. Yeah, there's Bloomfield Public Schools Black History Month, February two thousand and twenty. I mean, it's two pages worth of things that are going on within our school districts at all of our schools. So if you get the time, go online and go into the schools and, and look at the poster assemblies, look at the concerts, sit in the classroom, and just see what a lot of our kids are doing. And I think that's about it for me. So I'll entertain emotion. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.